Welcome to the planning staff. All right, we appreciate the planning staff coming and sticking with us this long, and I will turn it over to Mr. Sloan to tell us about his budget.
Thank you, Council Lady. My name is Doug Sloan. I'm the Director of the Planning Department. In the interest of time, I'm going to do a quick introduction of who's here with me. George Rooker is on my right. Bob Lehman is on my left. And over to my far left, I have Kerry Logan and Greg Claxton, who both know the CIB much better than I do. So if you have any questions regarding the CIB, I made sure that they were here and stuck it out with me. So in the mayor's budget, we were recommended to improve our staff by three positions. They are Planning Manager 1, Planner 1, and Engineer 1. The salaries total 185,4 with benefits included. That's a total of 265. All three of these positions are directed towards the effort by the city to improve our transportation in all manners, which these positions would work closely with the Public Works Department as begin to put together a transportation or a department of, or division of transportation within the Public Works Department. I do want to just quickly mention, and I know I've brought this up a number of times in meeting with many of you council members individually. I have worked with Metro in a number of positions over 20 years, and I've never seen the level of cooperation and coordination that we're having today with MTA, with planning, with codes, with Public Works, and MDHA. We're all working together, I think, to try and solve the transportation problem. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Wow. Great. Are there any questions? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Sloan, I appreciate that these new positions are transportation-related because I know your staff there really, really needs some support. I did want to ask, I apologize if I've not watched your budget hearing with the mayor, but I did not know, you know, in an ideal world, would you have additional staffing? I guess as I talk to some colleagues and we kind of think about things that we want to do proactively in our district, districts, plural. So, you know, in our work, often we're just being reactive, right? Responding, you know, somebody comes to us with a development proposal and so forth. But I think in the same spirit of, we were speaking about taking the economic development tours around our districts and looking at certain areas. I think we recognize that there are some areas that need a vision that maybe have not been engaged with, you know, the community, the planning department, just to kind of set a vision, you know, in the spirit of Nashville Next, but start to kind of think about what that area might be. So I just didn't know from a staffing perspective, do you feel like you have the capacity to do some of that proactive community planning, working with communities to visions for certain kind of evolving commercial areas adjacent to neighborhoods and so forth? Can you speak to that from a staffing perspective?
Well, we do have a staff, staffing right now where we're able to continue to work with communities, to develop UDOs, and work with communities to develop contextual overlays and other design regulations that we know the community wants to see more of. On, we handed out our review from last year. I think all the committee members have the 2016 annual report in front of you. And if you can turn to page 22, I believe. One of the things that you'll see at the bottom, the last two graphs there at the bottom on page 22, it indicates the different types of, or I should say, the number of overlay districts that we've seen an increase in and also the SP, the number of SP zoning districts that we've seen a dramatic increase in. And all of that is trending upward, and it is creating a lot of stress on the department to be able to continue that. In our, in our request, our top two requests were for an additional position in, or I should say, two of our top three requests were a additional position in the Community Plans Division. And Land Development was the third after one of the transit positions that has been recommended by the mayor. So we recognize that we're not able to get to a lot of the requests that council members have at the speed I know that the council would like. We take them in the order that they're presented. I know that we've recently finished up the Clarksville, or at least the draft for the Clarksville UDO for Clarksville Pike. We have a couple of other council members that have requested additional UDOs along their corridors. Certainly, Nolansville Road has a number of council members that would like to see us from Bednay all the way into, to Colby Sledges District, all along Nolansville Road. And we're anxious to get to those. But it would, it would take additional staffing if we're.
Understood. And I think, you know, what I'm looking at, or I guess hoping for, is that, you know, while overlays and so forth are kind of, you know, preservation-minded and UDOs are a very specific tool, I think sometimes when communities have conversations, if it is in response to a particular development, that already, you're already kind of starting in the hole, right? When you're having this conversation. But if you can kind of proactively in an area that we as council members recognize as evolving, start to facilitate a conversation around, you know, certainly, you know, why density isn't inherently evil and, you know, some of these conversations like that. So I appreciate, you know, the work that the ULI is doing in that regard. But I think there is a need, in my view, to have some conversations in the community that are facilitated by planning that are more of a visioning standpoint. You know, it's not quite a UDO. It's not really an overlay. It's not in response to a particular development. But it's recognizing in certain areas from conversations that we have that we know that that has potential to change and redevelop, and what does the community want to see there? So I just feel like, you know, that gets so far down the list, right? Because that's not in response to anything particular. So, you know, I just hope that colleagues in the administration and so forth would be mindful because the investment of that on the front end is important and makes our work. And, you know, again, for the community to, I think we as council members want to have those conversations, you know, like what, what do you, what's your vision for your community? Not just reacting to a proposal that comes from the development community, but proactively saying with neighbors, what would you like this adjacent commercial district to look like? So if not this year, I know our transportation is our focus, but I would hope from a staffing perspective, we could work in, you know, and as you just look at allotting time, that, you know, those conversations are not really as necessarily as time-intensive, but they're just, they do need some facilitation and some professional planning people to be a part of them. So anyway, for what that's worth, I just wanted to share that and inquire.
Well, and I think there is an opportunity. There will be some overlap as we move forward in the transportation conversation. Nolansville Road's a great example of this. Nolansville Road is one of the five corridors that was identified by the MTA and as the corridors that we should focus on for transit improvements. And as we do that, we will look at the development patterns that we would imagine would come from the transit-oriented development that'll surround the stops, as well as the density that we need to support those systems along those corridors. And in that community conversation, also talk about the benefits of adding density to those corridors. That's one of the key components in being able to save the neighborhoods and the villages that we have throughout our county. As we have people continue to want to move to our wonderful city and as they flow into our city, if we have the homes along the, residents along the corridors, then that helps us to preserve a lot of the communities that we have. And I agree with you, getting that message out and being able to talk to the community in a way so that that's explained to them. I think there's a chance that we're going to get to do that through the transportation conversation as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Sloan, not sure who wants to answer this. I don't know if it's Mr. Rooker, yourself, or Bob. Okay, so Personnel Services, 260,000 additional. That's for the three additional people. And that's for the, that's the full cost, I would assume, with benefits and everything, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's a 6.63% increase in staffing cost. But yet your internal fees are, that's 19% increase. Why is that almost triple what the Personnel addition would be? Do you have an idea? I know they're going to give me one, an answer, but do you understand why it increased that much with three new, three new people?
Well, I don't think that it's just based on the three people. I think that it's based on the increase in cost in the IT, I think the IT charges that we're receiving. And I know Mr. Rooker broke this down for me. It's all, Mr. Rooker's telling me that that's all IT, all costs.
Well, no, I just, I was trying to understand if you're only adding three more people with a 6% increase in your operational budget, why is your internal services going up three times that? That was the question. If you don't know it, I'll go back and I'll ask offline.
I don't know for sure, but I do want to say this, that we are asking a lot more of IT than we used to in the past.
Okay.
We're doing 3D modeling. We're creating a lot of more layers in our GIS division to try and communicate our information in a better way to the community and to the council and to the mayor's office. And I know that we're, our demands of them have increased.
Okay, and that's fine. That's, I just, I was trying to understand proportionally. It just didn't look even. All right, so let's go down to the charges, commission, and fees. Actuals in 2016, you literally doubled, or well, almost doubled what the, what you had budgeted for. So obviously, that's when the growth was really taking off. And then what is, what's the actual number you think you're going to do for 17? And here's the question I'm really trying to get to. Are we continuing to see some pretty substantial growth? Or is this increase based upon the new fee structure that we helped you guys put into place? Or is it a combination of the two? And if you would, kind of expand on that and tell me where the increases coming from as best you can, please?
Well, certainly, the fee increase had a dramatic impact on our revenues. And I would tell you that the, if you'll, again, if you'll look at, on the annual report, if you look at page 22, I think it begins to give you a better picture of the growth in the applications. We do, we still are seeing an increase in the applications, not at the same rate that we saw them between 14 to 15. That, it is starting to, the rate of increase is starting to level off. It is, we're not continuing to see this exponential increase.
And I think that's why I'm, that's sort of the question I'm really trying to ask, is are we still seeing substantial growth? Are we seeing growth in the revenues because of the new fee as opposed to actual new permits or people coming in? That's, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand the trend of where we are in the growth process or perhaps contraction of our economy locally.
We are still seeing unprecedented growth. But we are not seeing an increase in that growth at the same rate that we have seen it in previous years.
Good. All right. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sloan and members with you, Bob, Mr. Rooker, thanks. Just want to ask you a few questions. One question comes from another council member. He had to leave, but he wanted to know, what were your procedures? And I'm going to make sure I stick to budget-type issues. What were your procedures when we sent legislation over to your office? And I think he's referring to 608, something that's pretty popular. And amendments are tacked on to it. And I, and I'm asking this question on behalf of someone else, but I guess what he's saying is that we send one thing over and it comes back different than what we sent over. I guess your position or your legal analysis from your department think that an amendment need to be tacked on to it. So if you just kind of give us that layout for half a second, that'd be great. And I'll start in on the other two questions I have.
Well, if you're discussing, if what you're asking me is about the countless pieces of legislation that we see annually that are presented to us, then what we do is we compare that piece of legislation to what the general plan requires or what the goals of the general plan are. And usually, it's a policy. It's the land use policy for a particular parcel that may already be in place. So a piece of legislation would come to the Planning Commission, and it would say that the property wanted to be rezoned to a multifamily. But in fact, that the policy for the land would be neighborhood maintenance, and it's a single-family neighborhood. Then the amendments that we would, we would recommend to the commission, first of all, the department just makes recommendations to the commission itself. The commission actually makes the final recommendation that comes to council. And then the commission then would look at that recommendation from the department and see what the basis is regarding the policy, and then would make an amendment that says, or what they would do is make a recommendation, would say approval or disapproval, let's say, as submitted, but approval with the amendments. So that is generally how hundreds of bills that come through our department annually are handled. But if what you're asking me is about 608 in particular, then that's a different circumstance.
Well, I guess what he was really asking is your authority as a director to tack on amendments to legislation that's sent. And I think what you're saying is that based on policy and based on other rules, you may know, once it leave our shop, you are obligated to tack on these amendment in order for it to be valid.
In order for it to get a recommendation of approval from the commission, then oftentimes, it is required that there be an amendment to the piece of legislation.
Okay, thank you.
So your question wasn't directly about 608?
No, well, he mentioned, he mentioned 608 as one example. And what his question was, was really, what authority did you actually have to tack on amendments? And I think you've explained it well enough. And I know there, it's getting late, and I want to ask some other question that has to do with the district.
Related to the budget.
Now, in your budget request, you're asked for three staff members. And I've met with your staff recently. And one of the concerns I had is that when we have community meetings, we need, particular in the southeast, we need a representative from the planning department in many cases to help us explain the nature of the commission's action. Because developers will come to our community and they'll say, this has been approved, it's on the consent agenda, the commission approved it. Everybody thinks it's fine. You're out here in the community now, just don't want what Nashville Next calls for. And it leaves us in a, you know, in a bad position with the community. So what my position was is that we have enough staff to come to community meetings. Explain to us whether or not you have the staff, the suppliers, and what are your procedures when we have these meetings, particular at night, when your staff is basically off, or on the weekends? How can we request that assistance from your office? Because there are a lot of things tied in. One, the school capacity, which we get the report from you all, and they describe the school capacity. And oftentimes, the community just don't buy that, those numbers, that the project is going to empty to the district. And they don't buy the density issue, particularly in Antioch area. And we need help explaining that. So my question's centered around whether or not we're going to get more help from your staff when we have community meetings to explain to our neighbors how the Planning Commission and how your staff went about giving this particular investor or developer, I guess, approval from the commission's level? Because yet, it has to go through council.
Well, Councilman, we don't have the staff to go to all community meetings that we're requested to go to. I get requests from virtually every council member, you know, if not every month, it seems like every few months, to have staff attend community meetings. And given the unprecedented growth that we have going on right now, I have staff, and I almost would invite you to go by my office today, and I'd be surprised if there wasn't staff reviewing plans even at this hour. And they're not paid overtime, I would point that out as well. So the, the amount of time that my staff are already working after hours, it's extraordinarily difficult then for me to ask them to also attend all of the requests that we get for community meetings. So what we try to do is wait until we see that a project has moved a little further along. And Councilman, I know that you're aware that oftentimes, that the developments that we're presented with at an early stage, that I know that all of you council members are confronted with having to go to the community and talk about, that actually, a fair small percentage of those actually become real development. And so what I've tried to do to be considerate of my staff and the hours that they're already putting in is to wait for developments to move further along in the conversation before the planning department actually starts to engage with the community. Now, I understand that that sometimes can, to Council Lady Henderson's point, can actually be part of the problem because we're not able to be out there early enough to have these conversations about where density is appropriate or why we might think that one area of town is evolving and one area of town has neighborhood evolving or one area of town has neighborhood maintenance. But I would just tell you that I just don't have the staff right now to be able to go to all the community meetings that we're requested to go to. I do want to mention something else that you've raised, and that is the level of, or the increase in density that we've seen out in the Antioch area. And I know that Council Lady Virture and Council Lady Johnson and Council Lady Dow all raised with our department their concern about the spike that we've seen in multifamily out in Antioch. And in particular, I know that they're, one of their concerns was how THDA is focusing their funds into just certain areas of our city. And after having those conversations, you know, I have to say, I agree with them and that we need to look at THDA and how they're allocating their money and making sure that they're not just pushing all those funds for assisted or subsidized housing into one area. And we are trying to work, look at that as well. And I know from going to meetings with Council Lady Virture that that's a concern that she has as well.
Right. And I'll end up by saying that I understand the shortage in staff, but like other subjects we're going to have coming on after you leave tonight and across the next two weeks, there are certain fundamental positions that we need, particularly district council members, that others may not have. And that is professional advice at these meetings because we face some communities that are just terribly against everything, and it's not fair to develop us. But at the same time, we as council members are not architect, engineers, and we get left trying to explain something we really don't know. And it is a, it's a glitch in how the community view us and how we should grow. And I know that the city need to grow equally around all four corners, but it make it very difficult when you don't have the wherewithal to explain to an angry community, why is this legislation is approved by the Planning Commission? Do they not see our school? Do they not understand the traffic improvements that need to be made? But yet, you have legislation that's approved by the commission standing in front of them. So I'll end up by saying that this is something that we need. We need to have more staff that can come out to meetings. I don't know how you work it out, maybe in your future budget, but I can tell you, whether I'm here or not, it's going to be a continued, that's going to be a continual problem in the southeast and perhaps other communities that have a, you know, propensity of growing really fast. I think that we need more people that are able to come out and help as it relates to explaining to communities why certain development has to take place in, for our city to grow further. So thank you for your comment, and thank you for taking my advice under consideration for a future budget.
And if I may, Councilman, we're working closely with schools right now to look at how we come up with student generation numbers because we believe also that they're not as accurate as they could be and that we think that we can be more specific about the housing type and the location and the income and a lot of the other things that actually do play a factor, not just the housing type alone that results in a certain level of student generation. So we, we agree with you that, and with the community, that we can do better with those numbers, and we're working closely with the schools to do that, as well as locating new schools. They've reached out to us at a level that they hadn't in the past to identify that. I'll also point out that Council Lady Weiner is working very closely with us on how to look at our traffic impact studies and what we've required of developers in the past and elevating that and not just looking at the impact right around the development, but also trying to figure out a way to develop a broader vision of the overall traffic impact and aggregate impact. When you see a lot of the development that I know that Council Lady Virture's seen in her district, that it's not just one development in particular, but it's an aggregate of a lot of developments that lead to traffic issues. And so Council Lady Weiner has really been working with us for about a year now on how to improve that.
Thank you. Councilmember Withers.
Thank you for recognizing me, Madam Chair. I know I'm not on the Budget and Finance Committee, but Director Sloan, we have witnessed a pretty, I would say, unprecedented amount of turnover within the department. And I know there's just a lot going on, and folks work a lot of hours and things of that nature. Would you care to mention whether, you know, compensation and benefit and things of that nature that are budgetary are a factor in that turnover? Or is it simply more staffing per se? Or is it more about, is the planning department able to compete, whether through direct salary or through salary and benefits, are they able to compete with the private sector in a way that we can retain good staff?
Thank you for asking that question. And I think it is a, a number of things. Because I've given a lot of thought to this. We've had 25% turnover in the last year, and that's not abnormal for us, which is pretty dramatic when you think about it. And you think about the complexity of what my staff does in applying UDOs and SPs and looking at developments when they're submitted and they're in a, have multiple layers of design guidelines that they have to try to make sure are being applied appropriately. I would say that it's staffing is a big piece of it. The fact that all of them across the board have to work overtime, we don't get overtime, but to work additional hours. I think that's a big piece of it. I think that the work that they do is extraordinarily stressful in the sense that the development community is always pulling on us in one direction, and often, the neighborhoods are pulling in the other. So the stress level is another piece of it. I've had a number of employees leave my department to go work for other metro departments at a lower salary just because of those pressures and the time demands. I think some of it is the nature of the business, is that when you work in the planning department and you understand development at that level and you understand the application to the regulations in our city, you become highly sought after. And it becomes very difficult for us to compete with a lot of the engineering firms and architecture firms that are seeking out our employees. I saw a number of my former employees in this building earlier working in a variety of different organizations now. So I think salary certainly has something to do with it. I would also point out that a lot of the, everyone that we hire recently, I would say, have postgraduate degrees. They all have postgraduate degrees. So they are already driven, career-oriented people. And so I think to some degree, our department is a bit of a stepping stone. And some of the things that I've suggested in trying to help with that are maybe having an option to do something other than defined benefits as something to keep millennials in our office. When I talk to millennials, often when I'm trying to recruit them and I talk to them about our pension plan, they glaze over. The conversation's lost on them. But if I had the opportunity to offer them, say, a matching funds into a 401K, something like that, I think would ring truer. But if I tell them they have to stay with this for 10 years to be able to test, then that, I'm talking to a wall at that point. The opportunity to even give them bonuses at year three, which is quite often when we start to lose them. is quite often when we start to lose them, three to five, if we had the opportunity to give them bonuses and then amortize that bonus away if they stay for a number of years, that would also be helpful. So we have some ideas that we would hope would improve our retention, but right now, I don't have those tools.
Well, thank you for that feedback, and that's really helpful to me, serving on the Personnel Committee. Certainly, we're not contemplating getting rid of our defined benefit pension plan.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting that. As someone who's been here 20 years, I'm not looking for that.
Knowing that, you know, maybe our Human Resources Department needs to look at some other options in addition to that, whether it be continuing education or some of those other kind of benefits that might be more attractive to a younger workforce.
Well, and I'm glad you raised an issue I forgot to mention, and that is continuing education. As I said, that the people that we hire right now are very career-oriented, and showing them that we're vested in their careers by investing in continuing education is something else that we requested. And I understand, as I know that, having sat here now for a number of hours and certainly sitting through these over the years, that you have $1 that you've got to slice up for all the needs of our community, and that that's a very difficult thing to do. But if there is money for continuing education, that's something that we also think would help with the retention.
Thank you for that. Madam Chair, a few indulgements. I know some of my council colleagues have referenced, you know, community plan changes. From my perspective, Nashville Next is relatively new, and I could be wrong about that, but I think that it's a fairly recent plan. And I am aware that for Nashville Next, even after the general plan was published, some, a lot of additional work went in, in particular to Councilmember Haywood's district for the White's Creek area. I'm aware also that the planning staff have worked pretty closely with my colleague on the other side of Gallatin, Councilmember Scott Davis, which really is a quickly evolving district, and have looked at some of those policies. And so I think there's a lot of benefit to that. But having said that, just generally, are you of the opinion that we're already at the phase where perhaps Nashville Next might be getting a little stale and need to be revisited, or as a whole, or are we generally okay working with the plan that we have? Because I know Nashville Next required an unprecedented amount of staff time, and that's why I'm asking if that kind of staff allocation is needed.
I don't think so at all. And I think that the 2016 annual report shows the relevance of Nashville Next in our community today, because Nashville Next is a lot more than just land use. It was, it's intended to guide our policies across the board. And so I don't think that it's, that it's already outdated by any means. I think that it is spot on and that it is helping guide us. I think that we did it at a very critical moment, that we have it to look at and that we have it to compare to whether it is the in motion that is used in Nashville Next as a guiding tool. Schools also has informed me, you know, that this is a big guiding tool for them as well. And they come in and talk to us about the density. Or the work that we're doing with transportation right now and Public Works. A number of the general plans that the different departments and organizations in Nashville are building today are built off of Nashville Next. I will say this, though, to your point, I think that Councilman Davis's district is in desperate need of us taking another look at it. I think that there are certain areas of our community that are growing at a disproportionate rate and evolving at a disproportionate rate, and that we, that we do need to go back and revisit the community plans in some districts, even though Nashville Next is not even two years old.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Director Sloan, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Sloan, I can't remember when we had the conversation budgetarily. I know we raised the fees. How, how in-depth did we talk about impact fees and what it would actually mean, and what it may be able to do with your budget, and specifically helping in some of these areas where you do have the growth? And I realize that it wouldn't be something we can do in this particular budget, but is it worth taking the time over the next several months to look at, to look forward into the next budget to understand what impact fees could possibly mean for your department and for the city?
We, we did look at it after we talked about impact fees and the need to essentially have the people who are impacting our infrastructure pay for the improvements that those impacts have. And I know that was a discussion that we've had in the past. When we looked into it, we looked into it with the legal department. There was state legislation passed several years ago that prohibits us from doing impact fees. The only thing, the only area that we're allowed to do impact fees in is schools. That's the only place where we can assess impact fees to development.
Okay. Indulge me, Chair, if you don't mind. I bought a piece of property out of this county, and in order to get a building permit, they're charging me an impact fee. So how are we not allowed to do it?
Outside of this county?
Uh huh.
Yes. When the, when the legislation was passed, it exempted out a number of counties that already had impact fee legislation passed.
Then we need to have a conversation with some of our legislators. Okay, thank you.
Agreed, sir.
Agreed with that. Councilmember Karen Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Allen. Director Sloan, Mr. Rucker, and Bob, thank you all for being here. I do want to commend Mr. Rucker for all of your work on the CIB with council members. I think that process was definitely improved upon, and I think that we got a better understanding of our CIB projects and where they fit within the plan. And I just, I think you did a tremendous job in leading that, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that. The three, well, is it four, three positions, three positions you're asking for, right, for 260? Does infrastructure projects, is that part of the transportation? Because you're basically creating these to lead the multimodal, which is a transportation planning work. Is infrastructure included in that? And what I mean by infrastructure, those corridors that have been identified for transit improvements, I would think that would be what you would be looking at proactively, for like road widens, curb and gutter enhancements, all of those things that need to be done, sidewalks, is that going to be part of these positions?
Yes, Council Lady. Those positions will focus on all aspects of transportation, whether it's pedestrian, bicycle, mass transit, or the car, the vehicles. The Division of Transportation in the Public Works Department will focus on all of those modes of transportation. And these three positions will be out of my department, but will be working within that division.
Okay. So, for instance, for example, with Smith Springs Road, which has been on the list of projects since 1985, tremendous backlog, people are deadlocked or basically stuck in only having one way out in the morning. And as you're on a peninsula, I know there were long-range plans to possibly extend Smith Springs Road over to Hobson Pike, but that would require a tremendous amount of money to put a bridge over the river. I'm thinking that's what, what has halted that. But the other part of Smith Springs Road that needs to be widened so that traffic can circulate out, and people are not just sitting for 30 minutes to almost an hour to get out, would that be something that will be considered more seriously in terms of infrastructure upgrades, since that is a route that would be a transit route?
And I think that that's the, the goal of building that division, to be able to have the conversation about. And I have no doubt, Council Lady, that a lot of that, the traffic issues are because of the growth in those areas. And the hope by putting together the Public Works Department and the Planning Department and MTA all working together, is that we can start to look at the growth patterns and then help prioritize those public works projects, like the widening of Smith Springs Road, in coordination with that growth, and not in isolation, and hopefully use that, that information to prioritize those projects.
Thank you. And another question outside of the budget a little bit, is, you know, we passed a UDO along Murphysboro Road for the majority of Murphysboro Road. When someone, because we don't have staff, and this may be a codes issue here, or property standards, I don't know, but when someone is not in compliance, Brandon has been trying to work on this all day today, and you have a, say, for instance, in this situation, you have an existing building that was an automobile repair building, and then someone purchases that, and then they start making changes to the facade when there's construction that is taking place like that. Are they not held to the new requirements of the UDO? And who would we connect with in the planning department to ensure that their materials are in compliance with the UDO? And if they have a plan on file with you, because anytime they add something in, I thought, in a UDO, then they would have to do like the, so many parking spaces from the street, landscaping requirements, things of that sort, having a plan?
The Council Lady, there's a, and I believe in the Murphysboro UDO, that there's a percentage trigger within the UDO that then requires them to come to compliance with, with the design guidelines of the UDO. And I'm not sure, in that particular instance, exactly what that percentage is, but I will tell you that with development inside UDOs, I work closely with the Codes Department, Bill Herbert and I, there's rarely a day that we don't see each other and discuss development, especially in UDOs and SPs and that type. So that's one that we would work with together to look at, is, have they reached that percentage where it's triggered the UDO? And if it has, then what are the requirements regarding materials? But that would be something that we would work with together.
Well, because you're not out and seeing that, and we as district council members would be the first to either be notified by somebody that, hey, what's going on? And then that alerts us that we need to pay attention to this situation. What is it that we do as council members? Do we reach out to a certain person in planning, or do we go straight to Bill Herbert? What is the process?
Well, at the risk of throwing this at Bill right away, if there's a permit that's out there, so someone's already pulled a building permit, and then they're actually doing the construction of that building permit at that time.
Well, me and, me and Councilwoman Virture, and she can attest to this, they'll go out there and just start doing something, not even knowing that they are required to have a permit. And we don't even know if they have a permit, because by the time they've done something as a change on a building, then they ask for forgiveness and then try to catch up. So when we hopefully see something that's, you know, not in compliance, what is the process for us as council members to be able to get in front of them enough to the point where they don't do so much work that is hard to undo?
I think that the Codes Department is your first point of contact if there's construction going on, to determine whether, one, there's a properly issued permit, and if there is, whether they're actually building what they're permitted to build. There's, and oftentimes, we are alerted, Metro, both Planning Department and the Codes Department, we're alerted to people doing construction without permits, or getting a permit and constructing something completely different than what they've gotten the permit for by the citizens of Davidson County, because there's so much growth going on. We don't, we can't watch every one of them. But yes, I would say the first point of contact would be the Codes Department. And then they'll make a determination very quickly if this is an SP or a UDO or something else that would require the Planning Department to get involved in.
Another thing, just to end, Lord, I know I'm taking too much time here.
This is a budget hearing.
Well, this is budget-related, so. One of the things I would like to see in your budget or in your goals for your budget, is some type of IT solution where council members can go out, instead of us having to come down and sit with a planner and look at our empty parcels and try to look at what is the potential for those parcels, how we make changes, where we can actually click on our district and those empty parcels and project out what could potentially happen based on what's there. I mean, the software that's there now, that was through...
CityWorks.
The Assessors Office. It's a little bit difficult. Well, even, I guess it's the planning staff, because you go through the Planning Department to look at properties. I'm just saying, I would like to see something where we as council members on our own time, because of the fact that you're limited in staff, to be able to look proactively at our empty parcels and our current zonings, and figure out proactively what we can do to bring more balance to our districts.
Well, and Council Lady, one of the things that we're working on, and we've made a lot of progress on, is 3D modeling. And we can do that when it's site-specific and we have a plan in front of us. And we've looked at some programs where we could do that when we have base zoning, and we can project on a property what the massing of development on that property could possibly be. The trick is, is that your massing can take oftentimes many different forms. So if you have an FAR of three on a piece of, on a parcel, well, that could be masked in a lot of different ways, depending on what the overall height of that area, the limitation might be. But we are trying, we are working on, and we can do it today on an individual parcel, if someone approaches us and says, this is the plans that we would like to see rezoning to develop the property like this. Today, we now have the ability to build out a model on that piece of property and show the council members what that would look like in relationship to the other buildings around them. We, I feel like we've modeled out most of, well, not most of, I won't say that, a fair percentage of the downtown area, because that's where we first started trying to learn how to do this and hired an individual to help us with that. But I would like to get a program that where it can happen at a more rapid pace, so that when you have a community meeting, you can project that. Because I think it's so much easier to have that conversation with the community when they can see
Right.
what that 3D model looks like in relationship to the buildings around. So often, I think the council and the, and the, and the Planning Commission spends a lot of time just both limiting what developers actually think they have the entitlements to, because they oftentimes think they have much more entitlements than they really do, and oftentimes also calming the fears of the community about what could actually go there. And if they can, and in our lingo, it's often lost, but if we could show it in 3D modeling, it often helps progress that conversation much quicker.
Thank you. And I'll end by saying, I also want to thank you for now being in conversations with THDA, so that we won't be in the same situation as Texas. And so then, we can equitably figure out a better way, even though the cost of land drives many of their decisions, that we can have influence as a municipality in how they approve those applications in the future. So, thank you.
I give you and Council Lady Virture and Council Lady Dow all the credit in the world to highlighting that, so that we pay closer attention to it.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll just take a moment of personal privilege to thank the staff for their hard work on everything they do for us. I can't count the number of times I've sent an email on Saturday night, because I didn't want to forget it, and instead of not hearing back until Monday, I get a response immediately. So, your staff works harder than they ought to, and it's, I'm very appreciative of the tremendous effort they put out, and it certainly has been helpful. And we are happy to give you three more people, and if you need more, let us know. We don't know if we can find the money, but, but it's helpful to know.
Thank you.
So with that, I will end planning, and we'll move on to codes. And I'll remind people, this is a budget hearing.